We're getting started now, we're gonna try to get through this. All right, so if everybody would call up, Madam Clerk, would you call up the language on advocacy letters, please? So this was as a result of a forum topic where we were asked to clarify, you know, how we would expect board members to deal with advocacy letters. And so the Governance Committee has looked at this several times, kind of gone back and honed the language. So hopefully, everybody has had a chance to look at these, basically, three paragraphs. The idea is to make sure that when we do send advocacy letters, that our colleagues are, if at all possible, given enough advance notice so they can take a look at the language, decide whether they want to sign it or not sign it, make suggestions. At the same time, we clarified what board members would be expected to do under different circumstances. In the case where we have taken a formal position of the board, it specifies how they can talk about how this is, in fact, representative of the views of the board, with members advocating in their own voice, and at the same time, using individual letterhead or a school board letterhead. It also takes into account situations where there is no formal position of the board. Okay, that was the first one, where there is no formal position of the board. Everyone is expected to say, "These are the views of the undersigned board members." If we have taken a formal position of the board, that's, you can advocate in your own voice, using letterhead. If you are dissenting, the last paragraph says you would be, you could certainly express your own view, but would be expected to let whoever you were writing to know that this was a dissent from a formal position voted on by the board. So that's, Dalia, did you have, oh, okay. So, no, that was, that's just a summary, and hopefully, we can get this finished tonight.
Ms. Evans, can you just clarify? This was unanimously supported by the Governance Committee, just so our colleagues know.
Yeah, thank you for that addition. Ms. Palchak?
No, just briefly, I want to thank the current Governance Committee. We, was it last year, looked at this, or the year before, on governance? I think this represents that conversation, and what the hoped-for outcome was out of that. So I think this clarifies the language, I think it makes it clear whether or not the board has taken a position. I think that was something that we talked about for quite a while. I only have a tiny thing at the end, wordsmithing, the views expressed here and represents, because views is plural, I would just take out the "as" and "represents."
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, I fully support this, and I want to thank this and past Governance Committees for looking at this matter.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, I think we can just go ahead and take that grammatical change. Ms. Corbin Sanders?
Yes, I too want to thank the Governance Committee, both this year's and last, for their hard work on this. I also want to recognize that this is really an important effort, because it does preserve people's First Amendment rights to express their own views, and to clarify whether the views expressed in an individual letter are the views of the full board, the views of an individual, or a dissenting view. The other thing that's interesting here, that is important to note, is that the position can either go on individual letterhead, individual school board letterhead, or the whole school board letterhead. And so I presume from that, that people will be able to have letterhead that just has their name alone on it. And that, too, I think, is appropriate, because that is, frankly, it represents each of us as individuals elected to represent our own constituents. So I fully support this, and I welcome Ms. Palchak's slight revision to make it grammatically correct.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, so I just want to spotlight two things. First, one of the reasons that we talked about the individual school board member letterhead is that we don't have that, as of now, as everybody knows. But we can certainly follow the Board of Supervisors' model, that they do have individual letterhead for each of their magisterial districts. So if people want to look at, and again, for the public who's listening, it's electronic letterhead. We're not necessarily going out now and ordering up expensive printed letterhead from some vendor. It's, you know, it can be done electronically and then print as needed, but that's one piece. The second one that's really important, I want to draw everybody's attention to, that kind of generated this forum topic, is in the very first section where it says, "Members should make every attempt to provide at least 48 hours' advance notice to their colleagues when requesting signatures of support." That is so important, because there may be an issue that we, as individuals, coalesce and have a shared view on, but the letter is written by an individual board member, and maybe the tone is a little stronger than some of us are comfortable with, or maybe there's statements within the letter that, while you might support the position, you may not support in the way it's communicated. And if we don't have at least 48 hours, in the past, there were instances where some of us wanted to be able to lend our public voice in support of the issue, but not necessarily how it's written.
Okay, seeing no other, oh, Mr. Wilson?
Sorry, I didn't make my interest to speak clearer. So I think maybe Ms. McLaughlin answered one of my questions, which was sort of what we're, I couldn't recall the impetus for this change, and now I'm recalling the forum. So there, so, understanding that there was not, was there any prior language? It appears that all of this is new.
This is all new.
Okay. And, and do we, and I know this came up in governance, do we know how the Board of Supervisors handles this?
No, we have not looked at that.
Well, I would say, I guess, that, just a little bit of an echo to Ms. McLaughlin's comment about the 48 hours. I don't know what "make every attempt" means when you're talking about 48 hours' advance notice. I think that it should be, they should provide 48 hours' advance notice. And I'm not sure the circumstances that we're talking about, that would prevent giving 48 hours' notice to your colleagues about an advocacy letter. And just to quibble with the Chair slightly, I don't think we need to preserve First Amendment rights. I don't think this change preserves our First Amendment rights. I think that actually it limits our First Amendment rights, because we've now put in place collars on what we have to say in our letters. And I don't, I don't, so I don't view it as a preservation of First Amendment rights. We have those, and we maintain, we continue to have.
So, Mr. Wilson, our Governance Manual actually states that the Chair will speak on behalf and send correspondence on behalf of the board, and that's why this is an improvement upon what is already in our Governance Manual.
But I don't, these aren't even addressing matters on behalf of the board, right? These are individual board members seeking support, or providing a dissent from an opinion of the board, or a statement in support of, right? I mean, those were never precluded before. I don't think so, because we were sending out advocacy letters fairly regularly, it seemed to be, without this in place. So I don't think that what was in place was preventing the First Amendment rights of board members. So, to me, this is, I mean, I would probably strike the whole thing, but if we're gonna have something, I think it should be a requirement that we get 48 hours' notice on an advocacy letter.
Ms. Keys-Gamaro? Mrs. Schultz?
So...
Sorry, Ms. Palchak was next on my list, and then Ms. Schultz. Okay, Ms. Schultz.
Okay, so I'm going to, for a Throwback Monday, I'm gonna channel one of our former colleagues, who is actually on the Board of Supervisors, Dan Storck. You know, sometimes in situations like this, you know, what would Dan do is a good thing to think about. I do agree, Ms. Corbin Sanders, that your statement that the Chair, when the Chair is speaking officially, it's sort of like papal, you know, when you're speaking ex cathedra, you're speaking on behalf of the board. That has nothing to do with this, however. And our ability to write a letter exists whether we write this or not. We're not precluded from writing a letter, and I would think that the best practice of being collegial is, don't put your colleagues in a position where you're forcing something, either issue or time, down their throat, so that they don't have the ability to converse about it. There's nothing that we do that, you know, we're not, we're not the Department of Homeland Security, you know, we're not, you know, ER doctors, we're not saving lives, you know, these are, you know, political or educational policy, or public policy matters on which you want to opine. There's nothing emergent about that. And so if people want to write a letter, write a letter. If you would like to get some of your colleagues to sign onto it, ask them to sign onto it, and give them due consideration. What I think this does is, in the vein of what we were discussing earlier this evening in the Public Engagement Committee, is who you have at a table, and do you have enough for the right people, and then the next time you have a meeting, did you have all the right people? The fact that we put something down starts to confine us. So fundamentally, this is not necessary at all. We're embarking on something for a reason that is not exactly clear to me. I know what practices have been deployed in the past, and I think, you know, we should just look at ourselves and be a little bit better on self-governing, and improve that, and discuss it in a, you know, in a board retreat if we need to at some point. But this is not necessary to do our work, and I think potentially confounds us later.
Ms. Keys-Gamaro?
We started this conversation, well, some folks said, "Oh, I think we can get through this quickly." I don't think so. I'm not sure what the objection is. I'm looking at the descriptive words in this language. "Board members may wish," if you take a formal issue, members writing such as "should," "the board has taken a formal position," "members may issue advocacy letters," "may issue advocacy letters." So I don't see this as taking away anything that I have, but providing some guidance, should I choose to write an advocacy letter? And this language, I think, suggests a way to be respectful of one another, that we have all agreed upon. I don't see this telling us that we must, but I certainly, if there was a letter out there purporting to speak on behalf of the board, I would appreciate it, as one board member, to say that, for that person to say that these views are my views, and not on behalf of the board. And so I see this as guidance that is appropriate. I don't see how we're taking anything away from what we would have the ability to do. So, you know, and with respect to the 48 hours comment, I think that, to add that language, I would respectfully disagree, Mr. Wilson, shall give the board members 24 hours. Is, should? Okay, I misunderstood you, because I... It's... Okay. I see this as appropriate guidance, and I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Mrs. Strauss.
Yes, I think this is appropriate in our Governance Manual, and it is simply our way of agreeing with each other how we will proceed. And I think it clarifies a lot of questions that have arisen over the last couple of years, and it means that we kind of agree that this is okay, and I can support it, and I think, I think we needed it, so that unusual questions don't arise, that may be somewhat accusatory towards our colleagues unnecessarily. So this lays it out, and I will support it.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I have three go-bags. Ms. Palchak?
Yes, thank you. Also, very briefly, in response, I agree, I think Ms. Keys-Gamaro said it so well, this is appropriate language, I think it is. If we should consider them, this is an appropriate way to be a board member, and was created because we had some situations where we didn't have that guidance, and I think there was some confusion of what was appropriate. To the 48 hour, the very specific example, as the question was made, is our own General Assembly. Things happen in the split-second committee meetings I've sat in, they make decisions that impact us, especially in the Dillon Law State. So that's why I would support keeping making every attempt to provide those hours. You cannot always do that in order for us to appropriately advocate for issues on our legislative agenda.
Ms. Schultz? I'm sorry, Ms. Darren Kofax has not spoken, so I'm gonna go to Ms. Darren Kofax first.
I just want to say that I am supportive of this. I think, I do appreciate also, the last part of a board has taken, and I think we needed some guidance on this. Members may issue advocacy letters supporting the board's adopted positions, and they may issue advocacy letters dissenting. We, this hasn't been addressed directly, and it's been, you know, I think the guidance is good, and I appreciate where we are today, and I would be supportive of it, without the change, without any changes.
Ms. Schultz?
It's very simple. If there's guidance that's necessary, it should say, "Any advocacy letter that is signed by the board that has not been subjected to a full board vote needs to include the following language," or something like in there, too. And that's it. That's all it needs to say. I mean, what we're doing here is, we're going down the path of, I predict now, this will expand. And what is the objective? Is the objective to get to, if you're gonna have an advocacy letter that is outside the stream of the work of the board, and you want others to sign onto it, go get their signature? We don't need, we don't need something to tell us to do that. We are, we are creating more work by doing this, and for what purpose? If the, the real purpose is the very end, which is that the views expressed are those of the individual board members, you know, here and sign below? Because unless, unless we've taken a formal vote, it's outside of the work of the board, and it's an advocacy letter. All you need to do is include that line, if you are sending your own signature.
But Ms. Schultz, I would suggest, if you want to propose something, let's propose it and consider it. I mean, this is...
Eliminate everything other than the last line, basically.
All right, so why don't we consider Ms. Schultz's advocacy? And we will do that in a minute. I've got three more go-bags. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if I understand the "make every attempt" language is really, could be better stated as, except when the urgency of circumstances demands less time, give 48 hours, because that's the only thing I've heard that, to, as an exception to when you would give 48 hours. So if, and if that's the case, then I think we ought to say it. Except when the urgency of the circumstances, the urgency of the circumstances will give 48 hours' notice. And I really do would like to know, sort of, what are we, what are we talking about specifically other than those times when we think it's urgent to get it out today? And so, and actually, the other point I wanted to make in this go-back is, I think that Ms. Strauss maybe hit on the concern I have, which is a complaint that accusatory statements were made. I don't know what you're referring to when you say that, but that sounds like the desire to control speech, right? If it's accusatory, we don't want it. That can't be said if it's accusatory. That's a control of First Amendment, it's not allowing First Amendment.
It's to avoid accusatory speech.
Okay, but, but, but we're a board of elected officials, and at times, expected to use accusatory speech. Because, because we have, we have, we feel a responsibility in reflecting the views of our constituents to represent, and that could be perceived as accusatory. So what I, what I understand this to mean, then, is this is a mechanism for the board to reprimand members whose speech is disliked by the board.
I say, it's the exact opposite. It is that everyone can have their say, and there is a process for it, and it's fine.
Well, then, please describe the accusatory language you were referring to. What is, what is the circumstance you're wanting to address?
I guess I'd have to go back to governance, because I think as a board, we referred this to governance, so... Well, so just to remind people, this was a forum topic. I no longer remember whose forum topic, but government, the, we had a forum discussion of it. Governance was asked to do this, to create guidelines for advocacy letters. And so that's what Governance has done, and we brought this to the board with the idea that this would be guidance in various different situations. There was a sense that we wanted to make sure that people had adequate time to look at the language of a letter, if at all possible. And, and as Ms. Palchak said, there are some cases where a vote might be taken by the legislature the next day, there's more urgency to it, so we would need to get the letter out sooner. And I believe that was why, why the language was such. But, Mr. Wilson, I have written down that you have an amendment that you want us to consider, so we can do that when the time comes. I have three more go-bags.
Ms. Evans, can I remind everybody that this is the second work session we've brought this to? And I don't believe there's any changes to the language from the previous work session, but that this was brought, I believe...
Actually, no, we've made some changes in Governance.
Oh, you have?
Yes.
Recently?
Yeah, the four of us in Governance did look at this very carefully, and we did, we did make changes and brought it back. We actually, well, we modified it from our original. And so I have Ms. McLaughlin.
So I first want to apologize to Mr. Wilson, because he corrected me that, in fact, it was a three-to-one, because three of us supported on Governance, and then there was an abstention. So my apologies, Mr. Wilson, for not remembering that piece of it. I, we, as I remember, Ms. Evans, what we did with this was really try to just streamline the language as much as possible. This, I think this is very valuable, because we need to remember where this is going. It's in our strategic Governance Manual. It's, it's how we try to govern ourselves and govern as a body. And this, there was concern that a prior issue went out, and I think it might have had eight-plus board members' signatures on it. And so the feeling was, well, if, if eight board members are signed onto this letterhead, and other four people's names, and I'm throwing that number out, I don't even remember, but if, if anyone's names aren't on it, then does it look like you don't support the position and the issue? Or is it just, the letter literally was, in one instance, was sent to us in the morning and said, "Give me your feedback by 12 noon." And it took a couple of us to respectfully approach that board member to say, "I support the overall position on this advocacy letter," and it was time-sensitive, it was a letter that was going before a governing body, not the General Assembly, and they were gonna make a fast decision, and we felt like our voice mattered. But we're trying to help each other, help our working relationships with each other. And so whether or not you decide to sign onto the letter, the 48 hours' advance notice is, in my mind, a way that we continue, yeah, it is, it's courtesy to one another. And then the other piece was, at one point, we deliberated on whether we'd say, "If it's not a formal position of the board, you can't use board letterhead, period." You, we were gonna say, "Everybody, get your own individual letterhead, and then if you want to solicit some colleagues to join you on a letter that the board hasn't weighed in on." And this was the compromise, to sort of say, "You want to use board letterhead, that's fine." But these statements here, to where Ms. Schultz, you were saying, you know, "This is all too much language." Again, we all come at this with 12 different perspectives, and where we are on the spectrum on this one, but we felt like this was a way of making sure everybody has just sort of clarity on overall collegial expectation. And then if somebody wants to say, "Well, it's strategic governance, it's a guideline, you can't boot me out of office for it, and you can't even censure me for it, you're just, here's a best-practice approach." And so I do want to also echo what Ms. Palchak said, that I remember when there was legislation to change Fairfax County School Board elections, and only Fairfax County School Board elections, because the language before the General Assembly said, "Only school divisions of this size would it pertain to." So we were the only game in town, and it was not going to be in the best interest. It was something that was brought forward by a retired school board member, and we were the brand-new board, we didn't know it was there. And I happened to get contacted by a state senator and a state delegate days before they were gonna vote. And we had to scramble to get our voices to something. That's an example, like Ms. Palchak's bringing up, that we want a vehicle where people can speak to something quickly, and, but with the courtesy of the 48 hours, when at all possible.
Ms. Keys-Gamaro?
I want to speak to this as the newest member of the board, because I come on the board, and quite frankly, I was the only one that came on at the time. And so despite people's best efforts, I had a lot of questions. And so the Governance, the Governance Manual gives you that guidance, right, that you can pick up on your own. I don't think there's any ill intent. I don't know any of this background that either Ms. Palchak, or Ms. McLaughlin, or others have referred to. As a member of the Governance Committee, a new member, I certainly looked at it as a way to speak to oncoming board members, and even those that are there, to say, "Hey, this is one of the ways that we can operate." I think there's enough language that it is not placing a restriction on language. And so I really would like to call the question, if at all possible, so that we can, we can vote on the, on the things on the table.
Okay, I have, Ms. Keys-Gamaro has asked to call the question. How many people would like to call, call the question? We do have two proposals on the table, so, but if you, you're saying you want to stop conversation?
I have, I have no problem addressing the proposals on the table, I just don't want to shoot this horse a thousand times.
Okay, well, how many people would agree to, okay, seconded by Ms. Palchak, how many people agree to call the question? To the next, move to the amendments. All right, so I have, so far, I have only two that I'm aware of, and I would start with Mr. Wilson. You had a suggestion for an amendment.
That's, I mean, I think that's close enough. I actually would prefer Ms. Schultz's proposal, which is, sounds much more elegant and efficient. But I do think that this isn't a question of making every attempt, it's about urgency, right? So when we're talking about 48 hours, we're talking about urgency.
Okay, so, Madam Chair, or...
So I would like, yeah, I think it wouldn't read, "Except when the urgency of the situation demands, members may issue an advocacy letter." So it wouldn't go from the yellow down, skip down to the bottom. It actually would, that this change, if it, if the board chooses to pass this, I would recommend that we call it what it is, which is, not an every attempt, because every attempt would mean you would do it.
But you're not suggesting taking out that first line, are you?
No, I did not propose that.
Okay, so let's...
Well, that's actually, I didn't ask to delete it.
Okay, so we need to put that back in. Madam Clerk? Yes, and so that first line needs to stay in.
But you want to take out "make every attempt." Is that what you recommend? Instead of "make every attempt, except when..."
Right, exactly. I think what really was is "make every attempt, except when the urgency of the circumstances dictate otherwise, to provide 48 hours." I mean, I think that's really what we're saying.
All right, so, Tom, if you would look at what the clerk's doing and seeing if that's what you are recommending. So is it "members should"? Is that what you're saying?
No, I think the "should" is fine. And I think that, I like the language above better, but in the place where the blue language is. Well, you deleted the introductory clause, "except when the urgency of the situation." That language was better than the "except when the circumstances dictate otherwise."
But we still need to put back in the first line.
Yep, so the first line remains.
Right.
The highlighted in yellow, put that where it says...
"Except when the urgency of the situation demands, comma..."
Yeah, you could do that way. That's fine.
Okay, "members should..."
Yep, that's good.
Provide at least 48 hours?
Advance notice, there you go.
Is that "should"?
Yep.
Provide. Is that what you're recommending?
That's great, yeah, that's good. That's fine.
Okay. But the first line is left in and I see the clerk is having a problem getting that. But yes, the first line isn't changed. So that would read, "Except when the urgency of the situation demands, members should provide at least 48 hours' advance notice to their colleagues when requesting signatures" and so on and so forth. How many people can support that change? Okay, that looks like it's, that is a majority, so we will make that change. And then the other one is, Mrs. Schultz, would you like to talk to your proposal?
So the sum total of mine is basically one line, which is, "Any board member may issue an advocacy letter if the matter being advocated has not been voted upon by the full board resulting in a public position. The letter should include language stating and then the language." That's all it needs to be.
That's all she wants in the entire thing, yes? One line that says, and eliminate everything else.
All we need is that if you want to issue an advocacy letter and it's on something that we haven't taken a vote on and we don't have a public position as a board, the language should include the following.
Right, so let's, let's...
This is, this is the second item that was in the call to question, Ms. Hines. This is what we were discussing.
All right, everybody, we're going to have this written down and then we're going to be able to look at it and then we'll vote on it. Everything else, yes. This would replace, this would be a substitute for everything else.
I had in there, "Any board member," and then parentheses, "ask," so that you could do it, you could, as a collective? You have to pull the language from the end of the... It's the views expressed.
And it would take out the issue about a dissent? Because there would be no dissent. This is only if the matter has not been formally voted on by the board. So this is only in matters where there's no position of the board.
Which is everything. It's everything other than the full position of the board. So it's anything that, you can issue a letter on anything. You can issue an advocacy letter on anything. If it's something that the board hasn't taken a full position on, it should include the following language.
That's fine. Can you please clarify that?
Or you could add, or you could add, if you want to say, or if it's a, or if it's...
But it doesn't, that's not the right language because it's not a dissent. It's, Madam Clerk, it's from A. "The views expressed here and represent the views of the undersigned and are not an official position of the Fairfax County School Board," correct, Mrs. Schultz?
Right, because that would include a dissent by virtue of the fact...
No, it's from 1A, Madam Clerk. "The views expressed here and represent the views of the undersigned." And so that would... Ms. McLaughlin?
This is streamline and focus, not focus and focus.
Ms. Schultz, I respectfully disagree. I think that now, the long, extensive work we did on governance to try to address two different scenarios, which is, one, where...
We're voting at this point. I agree with your views, but I just want to be clear that we are...
I agree, but what I'm saying is, we're speaking to her streamline and I'm saying we can't do her streamline because it actually doesn't address the two issues that the original language is trying to say.
But at this point, we're not having any more discussion. We're just voting now. All right, has everybody had a chance to look at, the first paragraph written up there would be a substitute for what the Governance Committee brought to the board?
Can I, can I correct the language?
No, we're not going to have any more discussion unless you want...
I'm not advocating any more discussion. I would like to fix the language that I'm advocating for before we vote on it, if that would be all right. If you would please add, to make sure, "If the matter being advocated has not been voted on by the full board resulting in a public position, comma, or is in dissent to a position taken by the board, a public vote taken by the board." That includes it all.
All right, has everybody had an opportunity to look at this language? All right, how many support that language? How many oppose that as a substitute language? All right, so we won't include that. And that, now, can I get a show of hands of how many people can support the, what we brought to the board with the change that we made with Mr. Wilson's amendment? All right, and that will then go on a future agenda. All right, thank you very much. We'll take a three-minute break.
So can I ask, what's going to happen if you don't like the language that's in an advocacy letter? Because we didn't, that doesn't address what Ms. Strauss brought up.
If who doesn't like an advocacy...
If anybody doesn't like it. So why does it get reviewed?
Who's, what do you mean, if you don't like it?
Who's reviewing it? Well, why are we sharing it? I'm just saying, I can predict exactly where this is going.
So people will be given 48 hours to look at it. You can sign it or not sign it. You can express your views about it. You can choose to sign it or not sign it.
There's no censorship. You can...
But the idea is that we will all be sharing our advocacy letters as board members and if we were requesting other people to sign it, now, we can all have advocacy letters that we simply sign ourselves and then we don't have to, you know, pass it around. But if we're going to ask board members to sign it, then we will pass it around.
So, Ms. Evans, we have one remaining item on this agenda tonight and it is now 10 minutes till nine. Actually, we were supposed to go in...